This conference will now be recorded.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is consent agenda items, approval of the minutes, statement of the bill, and a resolution that would just change our meeting date. Traditionally, we don't have a meeting the last schedule meeting in December. And instead of having it way toward the beginning of the month, item C would just have one meeting in the middle of the month instead of one meeting all week. There any questions? We can ask those or discuss them. Now, your motion to approve this decision.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
You have a motion from Councilman McGregor, second from Councilman Mullen. Will it please hold?
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Bishop.
Just for writing your last three minutes and at the beginning of your comments, please state your name and your address. When you're writing it down on time, I'll give you a friendly signal here to let you know. And then just also a reminder that we can't respond during your time. And so if you ask anything, council, a lot of things will be direct staff to follow up or we can respond at the end of the meeting. But I don't feel like we're being cold up here. If you want to ask comments, now is the time to do so.
Fine.
Monica.
Steve Johnson, 507 High Street, in Edwardsville. Couple quick concerns. There was on Channel 4 news here a while back, there was talk about Kansas City's own DPU. I don't know if you guys have heard any about that. Is that maybe going forward? How about that affect of CNN? Another concern is, I know here in January, our cash service contract is renewed. Has there been any investigation to talk about that? I don't agree with you. The third thing I've got here, I guess what I'm doing, going to do is, I'm going to request. Well, first of all, I don't know if we're, I mean, parting about High Street, if there's any plans of street work, gutter work, ditch work as far as water drains. And if not, I have a problem there, which I'm really surprised and tagged has never fixed, that I have a lot of water drains in front of my house. Now, I've contacted two contractors to build, I don't know what you call it, some people call it a layback, curbs, or a, where I run about eighty, eighty-five feet, basically in front of my house. And what I'm asking the city is to help me. Because if you look at, I have pictures of my place, if you look at all water coming from the east, comes down to my lot, and it runs right into you, it down and washes out my east lot of my house, orange of the front of the house. There is no drainage like everybody else has as far as ditch or drainage. Also, when that road is redone, just east of me, the city was into an asphalt ditch for a couple different homeowners, and also to this west, down the day. So they have the help of the erosion then. So I'm asking for help on that. I've got bids on it, and I, one guy was just on his mind, but I, just, I'll probably give it a forty-four hundred dollar bid. I got new about eighty, eighty-five feet. My goal is concrete in front of my place, and I would like that consideration. And I need to be certain of what to do to go forward. Last thing is communication. Communication, as we've been proposed to the last time, this text, communication is worked half the time. I didn't know about the meeting. Renewed, new break. A lot of us didn't know. Also, I'm hoping we're not a city that does censoring. The censoring I'm talking about is construction activity alone. Facebook, several people made comments, now it's gone. Comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much that we might be able to address here pretty soon after the public comment time, and some of it might take a little bit longer.
Yes.
Any other public comments this evening?
Just come on today. Marley Johnson, 507 High Street, he's one. I had this one on the Facebook. I made a comment on what was happening up in Northland, and several people had commented also. And I made a comment on it. I went back to see if someone had commented on my comment. Everything was gone. Nobody could comment for that. So the eventary web is putting Facebook out there, took out the ability for anyone to comment. And I think that's it. Let's go and say that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Again, stick around, we'll try to check your, whatever week this night, and then get some research out to you later on some others. Item number three is old business. Consider ordinance 1077, ordinance amending chapter four business regulations by adding article 4.10, mobile food vendors. This particular item, we've had lots of discussion, discussion about previously, and reviewing the ordinance. It looks like all of the comments were incorporated into the updated ordinance. So if anyone, hopefully everyone that's heard of the laws, if there are no questions about that, or further comments, I'll put your motion to move forward.
I'll make the comment. Okay, I'll make the motion to consider 1077, amending chapter four business regulations, adding article 4.1, legal, mobile food.
You have a motion from Councilman Bishop, the second from Councilman Mullen. Will it please hold?
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Bishop.
Item four, consider authorizing city manager to execute agreements and other IRS regulations.
Mayor, thank you. Counsel, what you have before you is a background on a year-long event, both the IRS and the city, list a number of categorical errors, if you will. And of course, fail to file, fail to provide forms, if you do these things, or if you take credit, or something that you shouldn't be taking credit for, and filing your taxes, there can be consequences. So where we are after a year-long audit is we're in the closing stages of the entire audit. And this stage, they have sent what is called a thirty-day letter. They did it early October. Received that, and we've been in communication with our CPA, Mr. Knight, who's worked for us for a number of years, and he's worked all year, literally a year, on this particular assignment. He has a number of IRS experts, if you will, at the CPA, certified public accountant of business, and so he's gotten some good coaching and that sort of thing, and he's guided us pretty well. In addition, KUTAC Rock is our legal counsel in our tax, municipal tax division. If you recall, some of their legal background, if you will, they do a lot of municipal bond funding and those kind of things. So they have a relationship with, within their company, some tax experts, so they know a lot of the pubis thing and whatnot. So we've reached out to them, we've consulted with them on several occasions, including over the new night today. Tomorrow morning, we meet with the IRS representatives, and we do that like teams meeting, and it'll be our final meeting. So what I'm asking you here is, we have this thirty-day letter that has to be signed and executed by the first. That signed and executed document does include a few things. We can ask for an extension. It's not guaranteed. We have several of them. Some on theirs end, some on our end. We will have a conversation about how to close this out. There will be penalties, there will be interest, there will be these things that will happen because we've been proven to fail to do some of these things that were required to do. And that was in twenty-one and twenty-two. That does not guarantee any of this settlement, if you will, that they cannot look farther back, though there are some regulations, they can certainly look at twenty-twenty-three. Now, I can assure you that we've made some substantial changes operationally, that we're confident in what we've done in twenty-twenty-four is much better. And what we're doing in twenty-twenty-five, as you're well aware of, is our software purchase, which we're now implementing. We've included a whole swing of that the last couple of weeks and have to continue on. We hope to go live with our data on the fourth of November. So we've worked very hard to, that will help improve what we're doing. This is a long list. Some of this I'm being careful with because we're in negotiations, we're talking about documents that need to be signed that are not yet public. But in the end, I'm asking for the authority, all of this is addressed to me, led this investigation for the last year, that we will either settle, we will extend, or we will sign off on the investigation and pay the penalties as they have been assessed to us, to include backup withholdings that were alleged to have not been withheld. That's to not exceed one hundred and thirty thousand, that's a round number that I'm rounding up to. And therefore, that's what I'm asking, is that I continue, either settle this out in some way, or extend, and then at some point between now and probably mid-November, that we settle.
You say a tax exempt city has to pay federal income tax? Or this for your employees?
It's, it is employment tax. It's withholdings for ten ninety-nine contractors, vendors. We have misclassified certain employees, that's very common. They handle us gently without precipities, but we had to hire people who we believe are bought and handled as contractors to be employees, very similarly officials. That was an easy change.
We don't pay federal tax.
But yeah, we were not paying federal taxes. What we did issue, what we didn't receive and require, certain number of W-9s. We didn't issue ten ninety-nine. We therefore presumptively, we did not withhold the proper amounts, or any amount at all. And when you don't issue the right forms, when you don't do these things as the tax law requires, they can assess penalties, and they do. That's for, it has nothing to do with our tax exemption whatsoever.
But this is just for, I'm just saying that the city, personally the city, on our budget, we don't pay federal tax on that.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's all of them.
This is a question that I've always thought, I mean, but a lot of times people can settle with IRS and US generally for tax and that sort of thing. But hopefully, if we're able to give the authorization to try to settle, negotiate it as well as we can, and then I would like to, that they can just probably start into a work, just reach for that, that we are having a city manager, assistant city manager, and financial director, and our process and procedures are substantially different, you know, to make sure this will not be an issue.
Correct. And those are the similar arguments we've been making, and we're hoping for better with the IRS. I can't say until we talk to them finally, but understand, they have issued their thirty-day letter. This is kind of, they've concluded their investigation, and they found these things that are errors, right? You didn't do it correctly. If you don't do those things correctly, they're all penalties. There are ways, however, I just don't know what they are, and we have to conclude this fairly soon. And I'm hoping to at least get an extension to begin November, but not the first of December. Maybe November gives me an opportunity to come back and tell you the exact number. However, definitely, we may not have that time, if they have concluded. So our last meeting is tomorrow morning, and therefore, we don't have a meeting again. So I need this authority to either extend and sign the papers, settle and sign the papers, sign the papers and make a meeting.
Do you need an order of preference? If you can extend, extend, if we can't extend, settle, or I would want exactly.
We have both CPA and our legal counsel. What you're just telling me is to go forward and do the best we can. It clears it up. Now. Yeah, so the question is, not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand, which indicates, I do know the number, it's not over that. That will clear that up. However, this is the IRS, and this is from twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Guess what? Penalties and interest. So that could be upwards, if we really calculated, another fifty thousand or more. It just depends. Now, so there are some things within the documents that we've improved, and we've been trying to do that. But it takes the vendor's cooperation, and some of this, they're not required, if they have, if they have done their due diligence, they're not required to fill out our form and send them to say that they have done their due diligence on the IRS payments, right? So it's on the city to do these things right up front, and we have had some cooperation, and we have vendors that we have long relationships with, that we just have to pursue. One thing about the penalties, in certain areas of this penalty assessment, we can get a refund should we pursue that. That takes some time, there's a lot of steps to take, but in a sense, they, they say we owe it, we're penalized for not doing these things, we make the payment, and then we do our due diligence to get this form, we submit those, and then hopefully we get everything. Of some, but that doesn't apply to all of them.
If we authorize the manager to execute the agreement, then you can move forward with trying to negotiate as possible, settle with, and do what needs to be done so we're not throwing any extra interest.
That's right. Now, again, as far as interest, this is clear, we can receive another bill. I, there's a high probability, but we're on track from now on. Yes, now, there, I can make no guarantees about twenty twenty-three. We have tried our, remember, I've mentioned to you several times, our professional service line item in the administrative is way over. That's because we're paying the CPA for a number of things, this has been one of them. And I, he's due back this week, he was in last week all day, vetting our W-9s, all of our vendor information, and ensuring that we don't make a single payment without a W-9 to a vendor. You have, we have to have that man, that's required.
Can you be part of this, that this title, that will include it all, receives any future interest bills, and will include that part of our agreement?
Oh, no. No, that's up to them.
It does stop the bleeding, though.
Yes.
As far as penalties approving, and it puts us in a better posture to ask the waivers, if we, it's kind of like a payment of protest.
Yes.
Where you could put the money in, maybe some of it's in escrow, maybe we could, so we can, always show the big faith, instead of getting appealed, or protest, then there's less incentive for them to use their discretion, to believe.
We have asked for concessions in the sense that the IRS wish to pursue, if we settle this, pursue other years. They're going to leave that over. But really, the year that they could look at is twenty twenty-three, I'm standing publicly. I cannot guarantee how we performed that year on any of this.
Because you are in that position as well, great, and you're.
A lot.
Well, I'll make the motion to accept, authorize, and manage.
You have a motion from Councilman Bishop, the second from Councilman Mullen.
Malat.
You're calling, you're open for the session?
We can answer your question and follow up.
Yeah, general fund, you have paid, I'll do that.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Yes.
Bishop.
It has been a year. And I tried to keep you around as much as I can, so that comes out of our general fund. I think that's a great question, not to belabor this, but we have tried hard to increase our surplus. This is, if we say, one point eight percent of that. We're hoping to negotiate.
Thank you. I identify your stop presentation on the fire department.
Mayor, thank you. Call on our chief, Tim White.
I apologize, I was calling for it. I was ready to present this. So again, Mayor, Council, some of you may have remembered this from a few years ago, but we're back again, kind of challenging this. I gave this information in the same body, just new faces. About four years ago, some, the rebuttal was right back after, too polished, too prepared. But the information's not going to change because the data hasn't changed. The data hasn't changed because the demographics haven't changed. Reason why the demographics haven't changed is because the information's not going to change because the problem is still the same. We cannot change the problem because we cannot fly through data. Every month, our report's the same data, which is Fire Department Office reporting to the National Fire Department, reporting the same as the law enforcement body used to do, reporting because the data is how we track, until we comply with grants, until we get to receive grant money. Contrary to this misinformation posted out there, as some of you on the council may remember back in the fall of twenty twenty-one, we celebrated the fiftieth anniversary of the fire department formed from the city under the charter of the date of September the sixth, nineteen seventy-one. Now, they ran the decades been out posted out there of nineteen seventy-eight. In nineteen seventy, the population of the city of Edwardville was just under seven hundred people. They were a little over forty-seven hundred people. Currently, the city is forty-eight hundred people. In nine square miles, has an agency that staffed train of certified firefighters and medical responders up to the level of paramedic level on community, that is staffed twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Almost unheard of in other communities of this size, having an ALS providing EMS transport service. Always an ALS ambulance, and many shifts, two or three, they're staffed with an additional paramedic, on and not fire apparatus. With the new advanced EMD program, we will be ALS capable all the time. This is unheard of in small communities in the United States. But the old pros that had four sites, with the good old voice that was dressed on social media, are complaining for this horrible forethought. Many other communities of this demographic have a completely hundred percent volunteer agency, or a combination of volunteers, one person staffing the station during the day, to ensure that volunteers get the apparatus out of response. Not a minimum of five personnel responding on the fire apparatus and one ALS transport ambulance. They would have an ISO rating of five or six, if they were lucky to have maybe a four. The industrial parks, since we go to this staff in the late nineteen nineties, totally better. Many agencies with similar community demographics have response times of exceeding fourteen minutes, and many would not cover nine square miles with two stations. They, many of them are covered with four square miles of two hundred with one station. Most calls in the south are less than two minutes on response time. Our calls in the north land are non-emergency response, are seven minutes and forty-three seconds. Emergent calls saves us about fifty seconds. The risk over the liability is not worth an additional fifty seconds. There is no national or state standard for any of the response time. We are governed in between the tough process between seventeen-ten and seventeen-twenty. Seventeen-ten is the standard for response for career urban agency that identifies a power response in the first engine in four minutes, and ambulance arrives within ten minutes, ninety percent of the time. For seventeen-twenty, for an all-volunteer rural agency that identifies a power response for the first engine, is twelve minutes, eighty percent of the time. Right now, currently under our auto aid adjustments, we arrive within four minutes, ninety percent of the time, almost a hundred percent of the time, in the south portion of the town. And we arrive within the ambulance timeframe of ten minutes, in our jurisdiction, almost a hundred percent of the time, for a community of forty-eight hundred people paid for by predominantly industrial complex here in the western portion, too. The auto aid addresses, the rest of the personal response arrives within ten minutes by NFPA seventeen-ten, for sixteen personnel within ninety percent of the time. For those on social media that do not want Bonner Springs or KCK Fire Department responding to the needs, you can thank those because our ISO rating is a two. We have based previous on the mutual aid agreements and the automatic agreement that was with Bonner Springs, that allowed us to be the first in Mindock County to achieve an ISO two rating. Bonner Springs is still a class four, when they went to the all-career department at the first this year. Again, horrible things, not the previous spots. The insurance services organization signs, or the insurance services office assigns a public protection classification rating, the fire departments based on scale one-ten, with one day in the vest. The ISO rating is based on four key areas, the first communication system, the fire department is carried over half of the point system, the water supply, which is governed by DPU, and the community's risk reduction are provisioned. Of the thirty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty fire departments in the nation, there are just seventeen hundred and twenty-nine with the ISO class-two rating. Seventeen in the state of Kansas are class-two. When we became a class-two agency, Sedgwick County, Garden City, Fire District, Johnson County, Mays, DePica, were the only other agencies locally that were in class-two. We got ours prior to KCK even though they were rated a year later. Ours dropped from a four to a two, saving the homeowner in Edwardville approximately two hundred dollars a year on a homeowner's age. The automatic aid system not only helps maintain NFPA seventeen-ten standards, which we're on a wide lot, the number of personnel assembled within the specific timeframe, the specific number of personnel that adds to that sixteen by bumping into twenty-four personnel on the standard response. That increases not only firefighter safety, but more efficient operations for a community of forty-eight hundred people. It also provides coverage of our ambulance dedicated to the patients, which happens more often than not. Throw the word ensures our ability to maintain our ISO class-two rating, saving taxpayers' money on our homeowners and insurance rates. While our numbers from our first stock year in two thousand and fifteen were averaging about eight hundred and eighty calls a year, they have gradually increased to about twelve hundred calls per year. Our demographics have not changed drastically enough, other than the calls have increased, while the call volume has increased. Our calls in the north land have stayed about ninety-four to ninety-five call per year. Majority of our call increase has increased in the south land or mutual aid calls. But four percent of our call volume occurs in the north land, bay thirty-two or north. Of that four percent of the calls, less than twenty-three of those are EMS-related calls. In twenty twenty-three, thirty-eight of those calls were EMS in nature. Nine were lip disease. Nine were traffic accidents. Three were hands or dropped by the court department. Six were not a medical necessity call, five of those harder to press in or requiring transport. Eleven were true medical call. Most of our calls in the north land are for illegal burns, for wildfires, started at illegal burns or control burns that were not monitored. If you staffed north land stations or just an ambulance, you cannot take an ambulance out of service as a call staff from when a firefighter is called. By state statute, you'd be penalized and fined. If you set during the prayer the number of ambulances is the value of minimum staff, which our license states we will staff one, and if we have a backup provided by the secondary ambulance, we'd license it for two, we'd be required to staff for two at all times, and we have to make notifications to the state for the town that goes out of service. And then we have to make notifications to the state for the town that goes out of service. We can take it out of service if you don't have staff, but not for a fire. We can take it out of service if they have a mechanical tech, but not for a fire. When you look at the map provided up here, the heat map shows that the majority of our calls, the light green up into the red, occur south of pay thirty-two, the barb around four thirty-five, the call drive, the barb around four thirty-five, Kansas Avenue, and the barb around thirty-five, five seven. The rest of the light shaded areas are where our calls are at. Less than four percent of the call volume is in the north land. We have more calls that are mutually, with Bonner Springs or KCK in twenty twenty-three, based off the data that we track. Northland taxpayers want their fire station reopened due to the train problem. This picture is recirculated on social media for over a year. Is everything from that ambulance is on emergency call? That ambulance is not on emergency call, those are not warning lights, that five red lights are the brake lights, so it does not get rear ended when it stops. That picture was taken while that truck was transporting a patient from one of the three weight residents on a train delay. Because ninety-eight percent of our calls that are delayed by train, the patient's been treated by a crew because we track it in two places, the CAD dispatch system downtown and our report itself. When we pull out of the station, we can see to the general tracks, if we have a delay, the train is on tracks. If the delay is noted, we go down Woodham Avenue to get on four thirty-five, unless it is right at four three, pay thirty-two. Our average delay time because of the train on the tracks is twenty-eight seconds, tracked by the CAD system. Again, this picture is over and you're over. However, the train problem from UP's data last week is eight trains a day is the average that UP tracks on our north and south tracks. This is no longer the busiest section of traffic. Again, many of our nine square miles operate to just one station for communities of this size. When we sit there and see headlines and sit there and state that people are dying in the north land, this is not true. I have been here for over ten years. Within those ten years, our data has recorded eight people, eight. Three of those individuals were involved in traffic collisions and these patients deceased prior to our arrival. Four, the patient had been deceased for twelve hours or longer prior to our arrival. And we're discovered by a family member, or a friend who then initiated the nine one one. One, one patient, which was discovered when the immediately occurred, which will have witnessed party activity. And a caller refused to initiate life-saving measures when the nine one one call taker tried to initiate. One. Eight events, and that event did not occur on the train at all times. Fire is not the problem in the north land, human behavior is the problem in the north land. Again, in the ten years I've been here with the data, there have been eight trucks fires in the north land. Three of those were baked in at the time of the fire, no power or utilities were removed, so. Two of those were the result of improper storage of combustible items near a heat source. One of those homes had burned smoke feathers. One was the result of improper disposal of hot ashes or coal. Passion buy, passion buy notified the homeowner that the roof was on fire, because the wind that had sustained twenty-five mile per hour. One was the result of illegal fireworks manufacturing. Nearly all these homes were completely involved with a location fire department, and six of these calls occurred after ten human deaths. Fire calls in the north land are for illegal burns, or for wild, for total burns that were not monitored. But two of these fires that we had were discovered by the electrical company who were following up when their transformers notified them that the transformer had shut down because the power had been burnt, fault because the fire had been burning for that long before it was notified to them. Again, ours is not the problem, it's a human behavior problem. We can sit there and have the problem, we could reel from the station immediately, low cost air vehicles, the current pump that we have will not save the whole station by three feet. We would have to remodel the station, but that is not the only problem in that area. The blacktop drive is ninety-five to the hand, twenty-eight tons. Four F five-fifties have foretied blacktop drive like they have in this thirty years. Do you think a twenty-eight ton truck is going to do more damage to it? Yes. The original design of that building was built with leftover funds in nineteen eighty-nine, not likely to spin river dive there, but it was built in nineteen seventy-eight. The city did not buy the property in nineteen seventy-eight. When I got here in nineteen, two thousand and fifteen, I talked to Roy Rees, where he had to review the chief, took over the department and built a new station. I talked to Subsister Chief Sensi. The building was built with leftover funds after the original bond was built, this here, the main station that you're unfortunately. There was a property traded, they're over the station, we built up in the north land, the original parts of the steel building that's unfinished on the inside. It was originally designed to use as a volunteer station, and the original employees, when I talked to them and the original chief, they have set an overhead up there to entice people to volunteer for that station. No one volunteered. Over time, that station has sat there and stored the equipment. Throughout that time, no one volunteered. That station, when they sat there and informed the contracted EMS service in the Mindock County, the U G approached the city to use it as a west end EMS station, not specifically just for Evansville, but to cover western Mindock. The EMS providers at the time finished up part of the station, they finished the bathroom, loaded models, put in two bunk beds, they provided a dorm refrigerator and a microwave. The station was never built for the city's operation. The original plans were to staff volunteers because they were within response. No one volunteered because everything was down here, the resources, people were down here, because there are two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty-six apartments and property there. The current location is not available, but it's the farthest western end of our jurisdiction. It sits on a curve. It is a blind curve at times, which you cannot see. It is a bad approach and bad departure approach. That curve speeds thirty-five miles an hour, if you live up there, because people are doing more on very top mile line. The approach angles are not good for the current flight data. Taxes will go up to staffing. You cannot put these two people up there, you cannot do the current staffing because of the heat model. I can give you demographics all day long, of the staffing will be down here. It will cost you nine hundred thousand dollars, that is nine mil to put a staff three up there, by the time you look at the benefits. How much of that is it's going to cost? For two hundred and fifty-six, two hundred and thirty-six homes, for ninety-four calls in twenty twenty-three, that is nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars per call. We have cut a little over eight mil in ten years I've been here, that is wiping out every bit of the tax tax we have done. Sixteen hundred and eighty homes in this community in nine square miles, six hundred and fifty-eight are trailer homes behind us. There are a hundred and sixty-eight apartments in this city. I'll sit there and look at, seriously, the new station when we sit there and look at the design, three and a half, four million dollars. Would be better served at four thirty-five and Kansas Avenue. It is not exactly centrally located, but provides us a quick avenue to approach on four thirty-five to get back down into Old Town and still service in the north land area. When we have the need to get there. What does that need look like? We would need to look at when and partly how we devise that. That is going to take some development to do it. That development is looking at values at risk that are several hundreds of millions of dollars. That is at least five hundred more homes. That is at least two hundred and fifty more calls per year sustained. That is a ten minute or greater response time sustained. We have five or seven personnel in the current station. Yes, we are proposing expanding this current station, which are priced at about three to three and a half million dollars. Twenty-six percent of my staff is female. We need to get out of a bunker that was designed that had one person on the unit, provide adequate working space or sleeping space, instead of having one restroom, three, to be utilized. However, we are only building bedroom space, remodeling kitchen spaces should not fit more than three people, and it is smaller than most of the kitchens in the apartment complexes for a sixteen by eighty single-wide trailer. We are not asking to remodel a Hodgman hall or add on additional basements. We're talking about upgrading a little over twenty-five hundred square feet of this installation by upgrading HVAC, electrical, adding the new bunkers. I know it is not popular to sit there and look at this, but we are not looking at trying to waste a lot of taxpayers' money, we're trying to add on to add on different buildings, while looking at there will be a potential for northern uptown, northern uptown development to build in the whole of this station. Remember, twenty-six percent of the staff is female. In nineteen eighty-nine, there were no female firefighters in Evansville. You know firefighters were not a common aspect in the modern fire service. On average, about four percent of the American fire service is female at this time. This is another recirculated picture, but it is a year old. If you look at it, the trees in the background are nice and green. That has not been a case for about the last month as we've been in the drought. No one cares when the crew has to go buy new batteries for their vehicle, whereas the first girl I was seen in crash because they were at O'Reilly Bar and Spring. Or the bike was when they helped the lady that fell broke the pit wall mark to their purchase in office supplies. But I remember this call that originally originated last year because they just opened a fire in Bar and Spring in August, and they were buying bottled water and gatorade to put in school. But the narrative on this one is they were joyriding to go buy lunch. We work more than two days a week. We sit there and we're buying water, bottled water, and gatorade, they might have picked up a sandwich to sit there and eat. We do have crews that sit there and have gotten forced, just like today, because staff is. But if you sit there and look at what they were doing in the price shop, they saved a minute, they were no trangle. However, also, fair amount of township shops at that same price shop. But it's not every day that they're up, it's not every shift from each shop. However, again, nobody complains when they want to go sit there and buy candy from Scooby Express, or buy something from the Hobo Express, or something that's provided for the city of Evansville. But the individual that called on this picture was upset because apparently he got delayed in his checkout. And I remember the conversation very well, but it doesn't really pertain to what the conversation was and what they did. Again, when we sit there and look at the narrative being still, this picture was posted on Facebook when it was done. I was always the fire chief's office, the service emergency manager. Three months ago, I approached this board to ask for money to set our makes, meet the matching funds, for the FEMA project to buy a new generator to move to close city hall. This picture stripped off of what we had built for FEMA flood plan act as part of the flood mitigation project we worked on three years ago. We are going to spend about twenty-five thousand dollars on a new generator set for the community center and the new city hall. I worked with the U G's emergency managers within our flood plan. When you sit there and look at this, there's an awful lot of blue shaded area, however, when you get to what would be our proposed sitting area, that is blue and black interchangeable, that is zone X. That area is identified as the five hundred year flood concern. For the new shiny building to sit in zone X, a five hundred year zone concern is not flood plan according to E P. When we sit there and look at our proposed development for the new city hall, when I sent the paperwork off to FEMA for the generator project, I had to measure out the distance from the river edge, the height and distance elevation. We are a change of nine hundred and eighty-four feet in distance, elevation height change of sixty-three feet in elevation. FEMA approved the project with no questions. The Corps of Engineers approved the project with no questions. The Corps of Engineers specified for anything to be within a flood plain for a zone A, has to follow within the hundred year flood plain stage of within ten feet of what the flood stage would be. Our elevation change far exceeds the flood stage height for a levee of anything being built on the Mississippi River. Their levees are ten to twenty feet above the flood plain stage of the Mississippi River in St. Louis. That is ten to twenty feet, and we are a sixty-three foot elevation change. The rebuttal is Bonner built their new city hall on hill because of flood zone, which is an absolute false. Bonner Springs built their new city hall because they own the high school, they moved up half a block. The entire portion of Old Town Bonner Springs is not the flood zone because of their elevation change and everything else. The ninth street flooded and occurred in ninety-seven was due to poor wastewater and stormwater management because of driftwood that was down all night. Again, as the emergency manager, I prepare for these things within our city. We are better prepared now because of what occurred in ninety-seven, the PDU and the U G is better prepared. Plating has started with the new zone plan of the new mitigation project. Yes, sir. In nineteen ninety-three, I was on the fire department, we had a five hundred year flood event, it never reached the fire station. It came right, it was about two hundred feet from that fire station, that's a five hundred year event. It was because of water retention and then parrot and tunnel creep for recreational purposes, instead of what they were literally go for which was flooding. We've been, we've been teed up, but again, the narrative hasn't changed since four years ago, it's the same data, again, we've had a decrease in calls, found, look down here. Um, like I said, I have lived here, uh, it kind of bothers me, you know, when I first looked at the job here, I was offered, I didn't live anywhere, I chose to move to Evansville originally, it's not part of my job description. Uh, I come here on Sunday, at the city council meeting on Monday night, on Tuesday, I opened up about ten homes. I made the offer on Wednesday, moved there within sixty days in the Williams Farm. I've been here for ten years, and the problem is, is I would sit there and tell you when it's time to move up north, and spend the money to move up north. There is no justification for me to sit there and tell us, apply again, that it is time to move to an upper station, based off of the data that I have provided. At this time, if there's any questions this council has, I would be more likely to answer.
I would like to compliment you on your research and information. I'd like to have some kind of way of getting that presentation out on social media, because the officers that are on there are demonstrating to our community, not that they've given nothing but wonderful evidence for our fire department. And the first year, born here and never left, I've seen tremendous accolades and just good progress with our fire department. I mean, you can live there, take a round of applause for what we do. The other thing is, I want to know if you shiny, if you notice the misspelling of that. I was shining, but you can say shiny, that should tell you something right there about some of the intelligence out there.
We technically engage on social media because the mental mood turn on comments takes it to public record. And I think that's where we need to go back to some high school civics classes, along with why you can't have city board members or council members sort to account all meetings, because then all of a sudden it becomes we have to post it. Um, then explain how we forget some basic concepts of high school governance, taught civics classes, um, because I get beat up by the vibe on turn on comments on Facebook that we're not paying the extra money. Because then every time that somebody would sit there and make comments, the news media wants it, that I'm spending hours running back over it to public record, and it's not about censorship, it's simply about the fact that somebody can make a bad comment, and then the news media or anybody else wants it, and we are spending hours upon hours chasing it down. And it is out there, it doesn't have to be anything we say, it could be the general public, and we are wasting a lot of time over a public comment that we would have to sit there and spend hours, or have our, we try and spend hours trying to sit there just blast.
So, um, I'd probably ask the council to consider ending the agenda for a executive session on this topic. Or we can address it in a future meeting, but I just want to make sure that, you know, how we navigate that. As far as social media and that, as far as social media and how we, um, kind of address the digital concerns. Because there's government speech, and there's free speech, and it's my intent, and I think every government official's intent, to abide by, as it applies, but I just, I haven't had the opportunity to discuss that with the council since it's implicated. I haven't had the opportunity to discuss that with the council since it implicates our constitution and statutory obligations and how we balance, you know, efficiency of government, the ability of the government to speak, we have the right to speak as well. So provide those things if they constantly require to provide. Helpful media at least provides some of that to the council. I know you don't like to do that.
My question would be, Josh, on number six, could we not just state that we're going to address two topics?
Yeah, or we can take it one at a time. This one would be legal advice, not ask for ten minutes.
There's something that can be, you know, sitting on to us and calling it.
It can be. I'd prefer to be able to talk for ten minutes.
Um, so can we do that later?
Yeah, we can do that on number six. I think we can just do that twice.
I'd like to address the chief one more time. As a retired battalion chief in Kansas City, Kansas for thirty-four years, I ran out here. This was part of my territory when I became chief. This department is way ahead of the game when city chiefs take over. And the guys that run with them and Casey K have nothing to praise with this department. Of his leaders. And if I was still on the job, I'd probably win the heat already. I think it's service. They're pretty awesome guys and girls over there.
How about me?
I know.
I'm not here to say, you know, I had people work.
Great people work. You did.
Well, I'll follow, I'll follow that. I, I, I'm a firm believer that any employee and worker is just as scared of the state leader. So he led by a stand boy, he, and one from Mark's company, has a member Bishop. And brought the standards and entire department here that was told to highest levels. So I certainly appreciate it. I'll give you permission to go into this every year. The numbers, the stats, the training, all of your activities. And I think it's all kind of been there as well. So thank you very much.
All of it. It deserves an actual, I just work with the media.
Well, I, I appreciate you coming out tonight. I'll tell you, I, you addressed a lot of the questions that I had when I, before I started on council. I, I live about as far north as you can get in the city and had those questions. Well, you know, what if we just stopped an extra, you know, a couple of guys cut it in half and stack them up here? You've explained that it's not feasible financially with our staff, with our equipment. It's also really good information that that building was, if it was ever going to be a fire department, it would have been a volunteer fire department that never had any volunteers. We are so, so much further ahead in most cities all of size that, and I'll tell you because I, I have emailed several mayors in the area where I'm looking at budgets and just trying to get as much information as possible. And I've asked, how's your fire department? How many people do you have on staff? And they're going, what do you mean on staff? We volunteer. Cities our size are typically run by a volunteer station. And we have a full-time fire department with an IASO degree, which is pretty substantial. And when I looked at the call times and things like that, as a person who lives very far north in this city, I feel like my family is safe and safe and secure. So, so thank you for the information. I feel like the more information people have, the better off we are. So thank you for your time with us.
On the next one, I'm going to draw some sort of ideas. Should we, should we separate out the two or can we consider in the complications in city territory regarding public records and potential litigation? And confrontation being privileged in the attorney-client relationship? And your purpose, one side and one side of the other?
Yeah, I, I would just prefer.
So can you just tell us what the motion needs to be?
Motion would be, um, consultation with the city attorney. And consultation being the privilege in the attorney-client relationship with the terms topic. Advice.
I think the motion would be probably the executive session. Polling here, who you just said.
As stated.
As stated, for ten minutes.
So just to clarify, I'll be pulling up some of my.
Your motion, Councilman Schreiber, is second. Councilman Adcox, please follow.
Malot.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox. Mullen. Bishop.
And before you go anywhere, it has to be in my, my office, the voting office. You're not wearing a lot of it. So just right around the corner through the glass door.
This conference will now be recorded.
Nebraska and South Dakota, North Dakota, Georgia, Denver, Levee, up up in there.
Your motion is Councilman Malot is second. Councilman Schreiber, please follow.
Malot.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox. Mullen.
Yeah.
Bishop.
Number six.
How old? Thirty.
Yeah, ten forty.
Make a motion to, make a motion to executive session. I am number six for thirty minutes.
Your motion, Councilman Schreiber, is second. Councilman Adcox, this one to the US.
Malot.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Yeah.
Bishop.
Yeah.
So we put staff four more in there?
Yeah, yeah.
This conference will now be recorded.
I'm sorry, I just hit the record button because you guys were still talking. Can you start that over, please?
Malot.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Uh, city manager report?
Uh, nothing to report other than we are entertaining a town hall tomorrow night. Invite friends, please.
Um, yes, I asked Chief Wimmer what's wrong with the well-being of our, um, thing that we're doing. Are we still doing that?
Oh, yeah, we're still involved in. There's some deployments, uh, just various things that we do. We've received monies over the year, uh, from that reimbursement. That's the way we're, we're involved, yes. Need more detail?
Yes.
Chief Wimmer? Revenue.
Specifically, I was involved with the task force out of Johnstown County. So this past year, we had one of the ones with the engine back table. We sent personnel that ran out of Kansas Forest Service three times. So we had filled out, go over thirty-four to thirty-six thousand dollars on those that left off my end. Um, we have got the group back for seventeen thousand dollars back from Kansas Forest Emergency Management Department people. Uh, the other sixteen thousand dollars for the Kansas Forest Office of Public Service right now. Those checks should be inbounded from that April reverse.
Thank you, Tim.
Councilman Schreiber? Uh, Chief Wimmer, can you begin with your presentation? All your information. Um, I know. So it isn't a nice way of people think they, like I already, I think it should be this way, it should be that. Everybody has their opinion, right? Give us the facts, give us the number. You are educating, you know, the current department. Big volumes to you, obviously. So thank you again. And thank you again in your department, the police department, and public works, and parks and rec, city staff, city staff, thank you. You know, a lot, a lot of the workers. Well, it is. It's, you know, the key facts that make themselves. The, uh, organization getting coverage here and there and there's a lot more involved and everybody's jumping in their cars and, you know, the round has to be made. Made a ton of kids happy and this city is supposed to get success. So, thank you all. And.
Councilman Malot?
Two or three things up. On Hundred Second Street, uh, nineteen twenty-eight, about a hundred people work with that on the west side. There's a kind of an undermining on the road. I think one of the city tractors got stuck in there four or five minutes ago.
By the ponds?
Yeah. But it needs some attention.
Really?
Yeah. Well, that's giving some undermining. And that ditch needs to be cleaned out and keep the water running straight down instead of across that road. If you just have, Ryan, just have a look at it. I think that, that needs to, we're going to lose a lot of that road. Uh, I have a question. When did the signage get taken down from the cemetery? Why have they not put that up? We're talking about the rules, you know, plants up there, you know, how you maintain the cemetery. Whether you know what it means to have that.
Yes, I am.
There's no sign. There used to be signs.
The names are being sent.
Yeah. I know that. What the rules and regulations are, there's nothing up there. I remember a year or two ago, we were discussing making some kind of a nice brick pedestal up there with a lot of map on it, directions for the cemetery. But there's pot of plants and, you know, big flowers that are just put out and get put away. And there's nobody telling what the rules are for making such a cemetery. I think that is good up there. I get complaints from sequel. At the north end of Hundred Second Street, where it intersects with, where it runs into Key United, Rutherford, you have up there. Ten to eleven caretaker with that. I think maybe some asphalt in it or something. The, uh, anything going on with the property that we bought across the street from your bank is probably something some kind of, like a little park place or something to attend to. Just sitting here.
That's part, that's part.
It's been discussed, you know, it's a matter of what investment we're going to make and what truly is. I, I think I mentioned previously, one of concern was the distance of the driveway from the railroad. That's one thing. Uh, and you, what, what kind of thing that we want to put there that if you draw people to it, are you creating, you would have to build a fence.
Why did it sound like there was any discussion?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's on the grid.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's, that is a good question. The, you researched now on all the four sidewalk yet?
Have we done any research? Yes, we've done research. Well, as with anything, just like the Hundred Fourth Street, like any street, anything that we do, we have to have engineering. So we're getting the, I do have the engineering cost just for the reconstruction. How much they would charge us just to design the route to, to, and it's not the Dollar General store. This is a west extension of the Hundred Fourth Street sidewalk. So. But yes, it would, I think the first phase would be we build it to the Dollar General and would land there. And then depending on what develops west, any of those development agreements, we would have a sidewalk extension that goes, the next phase is to those other places. So it's a more of a comprehensive, it's not just, we're trying to get people to the Dollar General.
Well, that's.
Because what if it changed? Because it didn't used to be a Dollar General. So, right? Right. They could, they could build somewhere else.
I'm just saying that, you know, we were in all of our budget. You know, this was top topic that we didn't discuss very often during the executive sessions. And I think that we deserve, that our people, that our south tracks deserve that, you know, that's not bad.
So the base of.
We don't run up on Hundred Fourth for people. We need one down here, for these people that down here that are depending on all of them. Equipment and, you know, products that they need. I think that needs to be in this serious conversation.
Yeah, I gotta point into the Historical Society one night. My God. I already have a project they need to take off. But, uh, it's pretty cool. I mean, I never went to one of the meetings or, you know, or anything I did in museums sometimes. But, uh, but they got a lot of irons and fire. And they're starting to get some better funding from the states and now the state has, they have some funds for that. So, um, anyway, I keep voting almost for them. And, uh, everybody go vote. I don't care who you vote for, go vote. That's it.
Councilman Wimmer?
Chief Wimmer, thank you for your informative presentation. Keep up the good work.
It's been lengthy, so I'm going to try to hit some really quick. Thank you for Scoop Express and all the time that's gone into that. Um, our, our residents who had a concern aren't here anymore, but wanted to address pretty quickly that over a year ago, we actually turned off comments on our social media posts from the city. And so if there was a comment that maybe was deleted, that might have been on a different site potentially. On one of the neighborhood grids or something along those lines. Um, but all addressed because it's also been, you also been personally somebody who is angry about, why don't you let, uh, people comment on your, on your Facebook, on the city Facebook page? And the reason being is, uh, over a year ago, in your expansion, that it was going to be really a waste of taxpayer dollars to upgrade our storage substantially to hold all the virtual back and forth comments as well as, not to get too technical about it, but that storage space, it's eaten tremendously in graphics and things like that on social media. So we have said not to waste taxpayer dollars on social media sites. That page is informational for the city. And so just wanted to clear that, uh, there shouldn't be comments on those pages. But please feel free anytime to come beyond, give your public comments at our meetings. It's always great to go with our residents and it's, it's nice to see some friendly faces out there. Um, we will have another, uh, contract coming up for our trash service. And so that's something that's in, maybe in a year.
Year.
In twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
And so that's not right away that it is next year that that'll come up and probably go out to the, the same thoughts that did with the smaller guy. Um, a couple of the infrastructure for the city can follow up on because we really can't come here. Um, wanted to remind our, our dorm lobby as well that we have a great sidewalk project that is investing, well, I've been running down town here, and that's going to connect our city hall facilities all the way to the city park, um, as well as at Byblane. So we are mentioning on childhood and sidewalks in particular. And so, um, I think because those projects are a long time coming, we forget about them pretty quickly. So, um, I'm excited about that. I think that was going to start too. Have a great night. See you next time.